It is 6:00 on June 16, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome everyone here. It's so nice to be back in the boardroom. We still have, however, two board members that are going to be with us virtually today, so we'll take a roll call attendance for them. Wes McCall.
I'm here.
And Tom Cleveland.
I'm here.
Okay. At this time, I'd also like to congratulate Darla Light and Tom Cleveland for winning their elections. They'll be, so they'll have another four years. And also to Lindsay Adams. She'll be taking my place on January 1, 2021, for District Number 5. At this time, would you please stand for the pledge?
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have before you a recommended agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
No recommended changes.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved to second.
We have a motion from Kristen and a second from Darla. All in favor? Opposed? Hearing no opposition, motion passes. Next is our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I gave him a chance.
Okay. We have a motion by Kristen and a second by Darla. All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, motion passes. Do we have any public participation? No public participation, so we will move on to our presentation and discussion items. First is our LSC annual reports with Dr. Bearden.
Good evening, everyone. Obviously, Mr. Perkel, our Deputy Superintendent, normally makes this presentation, but he had a family commitment tonight. In your packet, you should have a copy of the LSC reports from all three levels, elementary, middle, and high. What Mr. Perkel is doing now, he's meeting with department heads throughout the district to come up with a draft response for you. He should have that put together in the next couple of weeks. Obviously, he'll share that draft response with you first. Have you have an opportunity to review it, and once you approve it, then we'll send it forward to the LSCs. I don't know if you have any particular questions or comments. He didn't have anything he wanted me to make. He knows that you saw it in advance, but if you have any questions or comments, I'll try to answer them, or if not, I'll just defer to when he gets back.
Any discussion?
We talked about some earlier, but I think we...
Okay. Okay. Great. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next is our construction update with Tom Wenning.
Good evening. It's nice to see everybody in person, or at least the majority of you in person. So as this loads, we set up virtual reality today, though, for ACE and Performing Arts Center, if you look outside that window. But seriously, thrilled to report significant progress over the past 30 days. This is obviously East Forsyth High School. In this first section that you see was out there even this morning. The fire marshal has inspected 80% of it, so interiors are rapidly proceeding. You know, because this is 450,000 square feet at over 90 acres, we don't even have the roof in this last section of gymnasium. And I just say that to say, you know, literally every scope of that project is being worked on right now, given the size of it. So as you're finishing one area, interiors, you're just beginning the roof in another. So I'll quickly take you through some other angles of the site. As you heard me say in the past, you know, what will be critical on this is to get the dry-in before winter weather, so that we're set for opening next April, May. And the job, I'm pleased to report, is well on schedule. There's a shot. That last area is the gymnasium. This lower section is CTAE, the construction technology. Tennis courts will be located in this area, as well as the practice field, artificial turf. This obviously is our competition football field. If you go out there today, the press box is already installed. The turf installation will take place.
For Darla.
Yeah, yeah. She's got me. I learned that from past meetings. The turf will be installed in the next couple of months, so obviously a year ahead of schedule on that. But, you know, as we mentioned before, it'll be great for school spirit next summer, right, to get those kids in before academics even start. This is kind of an interesting shot. An aerial view, we went higher this time. Just a beautiful piece of property, and you really see the proximity to Lake Lanier. Gives a better feel of the overall site. And then this is baseball and softball, as well as the septic, you know, which is a little different from some of our other projects. Septic is complete now as well. There's just a closer shot. So we're operating at a pace in excess of $5 million a month, in excess of 300 workmen on a daily basis out there, so east is rapidly proceeding. Quick shot of our focal, which is our Performing Arts Center, and ACE. So ACE is already topped out, structural steel. Same dynamic that I described. We want to get dried in for the fall, so that we've got four or five months of interior fit-out for opening of the following school year. Performing Arts Center, you might recall, you know, more of a complicated project. Not only the structure that you see is complicated, but certainly all the interiors, mechanical, electrical, plumbing will be. So again, the target date of that will be Christmas of 2021. But both jobs just rapidly proceeding. You know, I'd say the other dynamic, as detrimental as this pandemic obviously is, the benefit was we were able to do a lot of the site work that ties into our existing campus and our existing operations. So we did that early, and although the entire site is quote "ripped up" today, you know, the beauty and logic is that all of those utilities, those shutdowns that ties into not only this building, but the entire campus will be done come early July, when everybody comes back. So that's just a huge benefit. It logistically would have been very difficult, but that's all going to be behind us in mid-July, which is a great benefit to our campus and everybody involved. A huge drop-off to the site. You see the road on the lower section now tying into Pilgrim, so that's well underway. For just about all the high schools that were in progress, West, all the furniture is delivered now for that addition, so we're well ahead of schedule for the move-in. We'd be ready today if they needed it, so that's great news. Cooper, local contractor, did a good job for us at West. Moving to the middle schools, I'll just do this quickly, because we do have a video on Hendrix. But since over the last 30 days, if you recall the last photos, now this whole administration area and cafeteria, the common areas, media, that roof is on, the brick, the walls are proceeding extremely fast. Structural steel in the gymnasium is complete, and if you went out there today, you'd see much of the structural steel for the classrooms is complete. Because we've got a video that's a little off-script and different, I'll quickly skip that and go to the next. This is the interiors of the color selections for Hendrix Middle School Hawks. So for all of the, you know, I'll say miscellaneous projects, literally every middle school is being worked upon. For each of the middle schools, we're going through the safety and security entry vestibule upgrades. That's well underway. At Lakeside Middle, same kind of benefit that I described. Of all things, you know, when the students come back in early August, right, that August 1, late July, we certainly didn't want the cafeteria to be underway with that expansion. So we started a little early, and we're literally working extended hours, weekends, such that that cafeteria should be done with all the workmen gone. And instead of finishing October, we're looking to finish that August 1. So that's just, and that same concept applies to all of the other six middle schools that have the various lab and tech lab additions and modifications to them. So it'd be wonderful to get construction completely out of the way when school begins, and we're well on pace to doing that. Poole's Mill Elementary School, all the furniture has been delivered. We've got final CO, not only from the fire marshal, but from the county. So we would be ready today if school, students return, so we're thrilled with that progress as well. And then the last, right, project that, so we've really touched upon and are well underway, every project in the whole kind of $300 million capital program that we've got. Elementary School 23, fortunately, design is well underway. The land disturbance permit, which is always one of the greatest challenges that we face, those drawings will be submitted to the county end of next week, so we'll get a jump on that. Final design is in progress, and we look to procure that in August. So that completes that, and going a little off-script. So this is the top-out for Hendrix, but I think it's a real tribute to the thousand people that are working on a daily basis on our jobs.
Topping out is a cause for celebration on any project. This is especially true due to the challenges that we've been faced with during this pandemic. Today, we celebrate the construction progress of Donald F. Hendrix Middle School, home of the Hendrix Hawks.
The Hawk was chosen as Hendrix Middle School mascot as a representation of its energy, determination, and to invoke the spirit of soaring above all obstacles, even amongst unforeseen circumstances. The Hawk is a true representation of the team's resolve to persevere through the storm of these unprecedented times.
Opening in fall 2021, Hendrix Middle School will be Forsyth County's 11th and largest middle school with capacity for over 1,500 students. Upon its completion, this two-story building will sit on 45 acres and be over 215,000 square feet, larger than three football fields.
So far, our workers have moved over 200,000 cubic yards of soil, poured over 4,000 cubic yards of concrete, and erected over 700 tons of structural steel since we began this project less than six months ago.
We want to express a sincere appreciation to everyone for their hard work and dedication to this project.
An average of 125 trade workers have been working 10 hours a day, six days a week, to complete this project on time.
When others were asked to stay home, our workers were on-site, evoking Evergreen's mission of exceptional character, building trust and helping others. Now more than ever, it's important that we reflect on our successes, and we look forward to what will bring us all together again in the future.
Your involvement in the development of Hendrix Middle School is directly contributing to the betterment of our students. Your contribution will result in greater education for our students and a brighter future for our community. From all of Evergreen, we want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your dedication and partnership.
So while that's a quick highlight of Hendrix, you know, the last three months really for everybody, it's been a lot more than just nuts and bolts, right, than normal industry. People could have had 100 reasons of why not, and literally each firm, you know, all it takes is the one reason why, and that's to get the students in and ready for, you know, August 1. So we got a great team of people and firms involved with our program, and, you know, we're working through it.
That's great.
Any questions, concerns, or anything you've seen?
Evergreen built the Santa Arch last...
Yes. Yes, they did. Yes.
And this is kind of good timing, the economy needing a little boost. We had people on the ground for side field and stuff.
Yes. Yeah. So CBI, they're a local firm as well. They're doing a lot of the middle schools, and then Cooper did West. So, yeah, certainly the economic development and keeping families fed and working and our programs.
So you didn't have any pictures of West? Is West all good to go?
Yeah, West is all good to go. The furniture is in, we're ready. I think, you know, that enabled some of the modular units to be diminished, not eliminated, but diminished in numbers.
Good stuff.
Yeah. And knowing that we had an extensive kind of agenda, I went quick. But I'll show you photos of, like, Poole's Mill. I went over that quick, but there's just some phenomenal different things that were done with some of those features at Poole's Mill, and I'll show you those photos next month.
Great.
Keep it going.
Great.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Good stuff. Next is Dr. Bearden, and he's going to present a draft guideline for reopening.
Thank you, and I also want to express my appreciation to Tom and the entire team and facilities, Matt, Matt Work, and others, who are just doing tremendous work over the summer. I actually was at Poole's Mill last week, and I know you received an invitation on the grand opening, and I hope you'll be able to make it. It's absolutely beautiful. Paige Andrews is very excited, and there was a lot of folks on hand working when I was there last week, getting ready for our students. I don't have a visual to present for you tonight. We've been working, as you know, since early June on our draft guidelines for reopening schools, and we're still in the process of reviewing comments on our first draft. The public has until June 17 to respond, and we hope more and more folks will give us their feedback. I do want to thank those who have commented so far. Our schools are scheduled to reopen on Thursday, August 6, and as we stand here tonight, I will tell you, I fully expect that that's going to happen. I think the only way that doesn't happen is if we get a directive from the governor's office or the Department of Education mandating that we push that date back. I don't anticipate that happening at all. I think local school systems are going to be able to decide when their schools will open in the fall, and we certainly plan on opening on schedule on Thursday, August 6 for our students. As stated in our last meeting, we're preparing for three possible scenarios: full-time virtual for all students, or a hybrid where 50% of our students are on campus at any one given time, and then also for our students to return to face-to-face instruction, all of our students with guidelines in place. As of today, I am still cautiously optimistic we can begin the school year with face-to-face instruction for all students with guidelines. As a result of feedback that we've received from our parents so far, I do have a couple of significant announcements for tonight. We are in the process of developing a K-5 virtual option. This has been suggested by some parents, and we're going to make that a choice for our families. On June 26, we will survey our parents, our K-5 parents, to determine how many families may select the K-5 option, for the virtual option, for the beginning of the new school year. Parents will have two weeks to complete that survey. The week of July 6, and this is a critically important week for us and for our parents, the week of July 6, we will hold virtual town hall meetings for K-5 families who are interested in the virtual option to explain the expectation and commitment for parents and students. It's really important that parents attend these meetings to be sure that a virtual choice is the right choice for their child and for their family. Our goal is for our virtual experience to mirror the classroom experience in terms of quality and rigor. And I don't think this can be emphasized enough. This will not look like the experience they had in May. As you recall, when we went out in March, we had just finished the third quarter. Most standards had been taught by that time. Fourth quarter is typically reserved for some reteaching, preparing students for state assessments, and some enrichment activities. And since the standards were taught, we were able to really reduce the workload for our students during the month of May. That will not happen when school opens in August. We have to teach the state standards, so it will look much different than it did in May. It'll look very much like a regular school day, although the students will be learning home, from home virtually. And there will be a significant demand on parents to help facilitate that process. So again, I say to our community, and it's really important, if you think K-5 virtual is something you want to consider, you really need to attend those virtual town hall meetings the week of July 6, to be clear what the expectations are, what the standards will look like, so you can make a very informed decision. Parents must decide by Friday, July 10. We have to know by that date. And the reason we have to know by that date is we have to determine how we're going to staff our brick-and-mortar schools and that virtual experience. And as I stand here tonight, I have no idea how many parents are going to take us up on that offer. It could be hundreds, it could be thousands. We have no idea. But once they decide and make that commitment, and this is also critically important, that commitment is for the entire first quarter. Once parents say they are in on July 10, we cannot allow them to change their mind because we have to staff our brick-and-mortar schools as well as the virtual school. As you know, we're going to have to staff them all with existing staff. We are not in a position to hire more teachers, so we're going to have to make this work with the staff we have on hand. So again, July 10 is the definitive yes or no, and once they're in, they're going to have to stay part of that for the entire first quarter. Now, towards the end of the first quarter, we'll send out another survey to see how parents feel about continuing in quarter two. Our hope is things will be better in terms of the virus, and that more parents will opt to have their children return for face-to-face instruction. I think we all can agree, for most students, that's the best experience. For some kids, virtual works well, but for the majority of our students, being face-to-face with their teachers, with their peers, is critically important. I do want to remind folks, in terms of grade 612, we already have a virtual option that's available with Forsyth Virtual Academy. And I urge parents of 612 students that may be interested in that option to visit our website, our Forsyth Virtual website, for details about what classes are offered. We don't offer all the same classes that we do in our face-to-face instruction. We offer quite a few, but not all of them. So they need to go on the site to make sure the classes are available that they would like to take, and also instructions on how to apply to be a student in Forsyth Virtual. Now, 612 students who are in Forsyth Virtual, that's a semester-long commitment, not a quarter commitment. And the reason for that is the Forsyth Virtual classes are semester-long courses. So again, if parents are looking to, for a virtual experience, if it's 612, they're committing for the entire first semester. If it's K-5, they're committing for the first nine weeks, and I want to make sure we make that very clear to our community. Having a virtual option for K-12 takes care of accommodating our immunodeficient students. It also affords an option for parents who are not yet comfortable sending their children back to school for face-to-face instruction. We are still working on plans to address staff members who have pre-existing conditions, and this is very challenging. There are many jobs in our system that cannot be performed virtually: bus drivers, custodians, maintenance, food service, to name a few. Financially, I'm very proud of the fact that we continue to pay those employees and keep them part of the Forsyth School's family throughout the balance of this fiscal year. But for the new school year, we are not able to continue to pay employees to stay at home and replace them with substitutes. That just would not be possible. This is a challenge that school systems are facing all over the nation as we prepare for schools to reopen in the fall. So I have no final plans to announce tonight. I can assure you that Dr. Salome and her staff are working with other school systems and our legal counsel to determine how we can handle, again, those faculty members, staff members that may have pre-existing conditions, and we will hopefully have something that we can bring forward in July, and we're working on that now. Another hot topic, as we look at the survey results from our parents, is the wearing of a mask or not wearing a mask for students and staff. In our first draft, we stated that masks would be optional for students and staff when we reopen on August 6. I'm going to change that statement in our draft guidelines to masks are recommended for students and staff. My rationale for doing that, that's the current recommendation from the CDC and the Department of Health, that masks would be recommended. I'm still not comfortable with mandating the wearing of masks for students or staff. Number one, I think it'd be very tough to enforce for our building principles, and also for some, the wearing of a mask could trigger other medical issues. So as of today, I want to change that draft guideline to recommending the wearing of masks. This topic is one we'll continue to follow over the next four to six weeks, and as you know, I'll make a final recommendation to you on guidelines for reopening in mid-July. But this is one we've been watching closely. Another very common question and comment I've been receiving is around social distancing. Schools, modern schools and school furniture were not designed for social distancing. In fact, they were designed just the opposite. Schools and school furniture were designed to be collaborative workspaces for students and staff. In fact, in our own learner profile, under interact effectively, the words "works collaboratively with others" is clearly stated, and we know that's an important skill for our students. Our current draft guidelines are clear about how we will limit large gatherings of students, and we will minimize movement throughout the day, but I want to be completely transparent with our community. Social distancing of a minimum of six feet is not possible in our schools. Even with a hybrid model, where only 50% of our students would be on campus, it would be very challenging to guarantee social distancing. Schools and school furniture are just not built that way, and that's why the word "social distancing" is not part of the guidelines. It's not something we can guarantee, and I just want to be transparent and upfront about that right now, so parents can make that choice. If they're not comfortable sending their children back to school face-to-face, they can consider that virtual option. As I said at our last meeting, we have lots of moving parts this summer. The legislature has reconvened, as you know. We are now being told that instead of a 14% cut to education, to plan for an 11% reduction. That's certainly better news, but it is still terrible news. In mid-July, I'll present to you a budget with the following assurances. There will be no proposed increase in the Mills raise for education. Unfortunately, there will also be no step increases for employees. And also unfortunately, there will have to be a decrease in the number of student and employee workdays. How many? We will not know that until we get the final revenue numbers from the state and from our county assessor's office. But I want to be clear about this, because I know you get asked and I get asked. As we look to amend the calendar, I want to be clear, school will start on August 6 as scheduled, unless I'm directed otherwise. We will still have fall break as scheduled. We will still have Thanksgiving break as scheduled. We will still have winter break and spring break as scheduled. The reason I think that's important to get out to our community now, I know families plan those trips sometimes a year in advance. Some of them have already put deposits down on trips, and it would be very difficult to ask them to try to reschedule those trips. So when we look at reducing the calendar, we will not be touching the current schedule for vacation weeks, and I want to make sure our public understands that. And again, we won't know how many days until we get those final revenue numbers. It's very disappointing, and I know you, as board members, are disappointed, as I am. We're so proud of how well our employees performed this spring, and it's disappointing to have to reduce student days and employee workdays. Our staff deserves to be compensated for the work they did and not be looking at a reduction. But as I get feedback from our staff, I think they are pleased to hear the two goals that we set when developing this budget. One was, we're going to avoid a reduction in force. If you're an employee in good standing in Forsyth County schools, you're going to keep your job. I think that's important. You're going to keep your benefits. I think that's important. And number two, I know this is important for our teachers and certainly important for our parents and our students, we are not going to do anything to increase class sizes. And so those were our two goals as we start to put this budget together. We can meet those goals, but we can only meet them by reducing the number of student days by a few, I don't know how many yet, and the number of employee workdays. That will come to light once we get those final revenue numbers. So just to recap, July is going to be very busy. In mid-July, I'm going to present... In mid-July, I'm going to present three items for your consideration. Number one, the final recommendation on Forsyth County Schools' guidelines for reopening. And again, it's still very much a draft, very much subject to change. Number two, our FY '21 proposed budget. And number three, an amended student and work calendar for 2021. So with that, any questions or comments that you may have?
No, I appreciate you expanding on the calendar, because that was a question we get a lot.
We do.
We want the 6 through 12 to try to meet the July 10th deadline also, or?
First, we're talking about that internally. Forsyth Virtual has its own guidelines, and they try to mesh that with the high schools. So Mr. Perkel and Mr. Hayes at Forsyth Virtual will be meeting with the high school principals. And there, we might change that deadline. We haven't announced that or decided that yet, but we are talking about it right now.
The sooner the better if parents think that that's what they're going to do.
But I think the most important thing, and I'm glad you asked that, so I can reiterate this, if you're not familiar with Forsyth Virtual and you're a parent or a student thinking that might be the right option for your family, now is the time to go on the Forsyth Virtual website and look at what classes are offered. Some of our students who take full-time Forsyth Virtual now, if there's not a class that we offer, they might be able to take it through Georgia Virtual. So there's a combination of ways to make sure your students' needs are being met. But I wouldn't wait to the last minute to start looking at it. I would start looking at it now, if I'm even thinking that's a possibility. Contact our Forsyth Virtual staff, be glad to help people out navigating that experience.
And aside from virtual, if you have a new child, kindergarten or upcoming into the system, virtual or not, it's a good time to register your child to get into the system regardless?
Thank you for saying that, and you're right. Because of COVID-19, the registrations have not been as robust as they typically would be this time of year. And I'm afraid what's happening, our people are just waiting till the last minute. And if they do that, we're going to get so bogged down and get behind, we won't possibly be able to get them all registered. So the sooner the better, they can make an appointment.
We need to be prepared for them.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments about the guidelines?
No, I think the amount of feedback we've got from the parents has helped you tweak and find-
Oh, absolutely. You know, the big one was the K-5. You know, we don't have that currently, but just reading the comments we've had to date, we just felt like we absolutely had to offer that. And we will see how many will take us up. But again, we're going to have to staff that with existing staff. And again, the reason we need to know July 10th, our principals are going to need some time to figure out, okay, which teachers are going to teach virtually? Which ones are going to be face-to-face? I also, since we're talking about it, want to say this and be clear to parents. Depending on the number of students, it is possible your child's virtual teacher may not be a teacher from your school. Let me give you an example. Let's assume that your child is a student at Chattahoochee Elementary. And we only get a handful of Chattahoochee students who want to learn virtually. Well, they might be taught by a teacher at Chestity or at Coal Mountain. We will just have to figure all of that out once we see the numbers. There's no way I can answer that until I know how many. Again, we don't know if we're going to get 500, if we're going to get 5,000. We will obviously try to staff it with the teachers from that particular school. But if we're unable to, because we don't have the numbers to do it, then it may be a teacher teaches from, you know, it may be from a certain cluster teaching those children. Again, that's why it's so important that they have to have that nine-week commitment as well. So, you know, once they return to face-to-face, we can get them back into their homeschool.
So it's a good possibility if they go start virtual and transition back into school, they'll quite possibly not have the same teacher.
That's exactly right, but we're teaching the same standards. You know, I don't see that any different than a child that moves into our community, you know, during the course of the school year. Yes, there's always a transition period, but all of our schools are teaching the same standards.
Is it too soon enough for the virtual town hall since, when it'll be held? Are there people working during the day or night? Will there be maybe more than one session to fit schedules?
Put LeAnn and Fonda on the spot. Have you guys talked about that yet, about a schedule?
We talked about two in-breath sessions.
Just because of schedule conflicts?
Yes.
And it'll just be that week, though, so.
That week of the, we have to give two weeks for the survey.
Fourth of July is a bad week, yeah.
And in part, in part of that survey, we will be very clear about those, when those town hall meetings are, and be very insistent that you need to attend because you need to know what the expectations will be. And then we need your final decision by July 10th, so we can work on staffing it.
I think you put out enough information tonight to get people thinking about, I think it was enough to give them.
And obviously, I know Jennifer's here, she will put out the press release, and we'll get it out on social media. Hopefully, the local news will carry it as well.
Are there other systems that have K-5 virtual?
Not to my knowledge, but a number of systems are considering it. Many systems have a high school virtual. Some have a middle school, very, very few, none that I know of currently have a K-5. But like us, some are considering trying to put it together for the start of the fall.
Does Georgia Virtual have K-5? They don't either. Okay, I was told they did. Okay. Okay, okay. Any other questions?
Special times.
Hey, Jeff, I have a question.
Hi, Wes.
The virtual town hall, is there a way that if I'm a parent and I don't feel comfortable going to the town hall at this time, I'm not going to send my kid to school, that we can record that and send that out?
Oh, yeah. Yes, Wes, we will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
You guys have done a wonderful job, and I think that options is the best option here. And I want, and I know it's not easy for you or the staff, but you guys are top-notch. Thank you so much for going this route and helping everybody out. I think it's great.
Yeah, we've got, we got an incredible team working on this right now. We actually met yesterday, and I feel very, very good about the quality that we're going to be able to offer for our K-5 students. But again, this cannot be overemphasized. It will not be like it was in May. There is going to be a significant challenge for parents to help us facilitate this process because it's incumbent upon us to make sure those kids learning virtually get as similar experience as possible as those coming to school face-to-face.
It's a full day.
It's a full day. That's exactly right.
That's great.
Okay.
Okay, next on our agenda is Dr. Bearden again with a report on our governance team goals.
Yeah, I don't want to read through all these. I know you've had a chance to go over them. Just so for the audience, the board and I set four goals for this school year. Goal one was the safety for our students and staff, and there are a number of things that we have put in place. I can call them up right here so the people in the audience can see them. To make that, to make that happen, and you know, Tom mentioned in his report, the security vegetables, that will all be completed by the start of the 2021 school year. Pleased to announce, all of our school resource officer program should be fully staffed by the start of the school year. We're excited about that. On your report for hiring of staff today, we actually have the final student advocacy specialist that we will be recommending tonight. Goal number two, teaching the whole child, social-emotional learning continues to be embedded with our curriculum. I'm really proud of the work we've done there. I'm incredibly proud of our diversity, equity, and inclusion plan, and want to thank you once again for allowing us to search for a diversity, equity, and inclusion specialist that we hope to hire sometime this fall to make sure we're working that plan. That's critically important. We're continuing our work through, with personalized learning. Fonda and her team have done a tremendous job. You've heard several reports last year around literacy, how excited we are around our partnership with the American Reading Company, and how our students are very much benefiting. Fonda and LeAnn would both tell you how much our instructional coaches have meant in terms of professional development for our staff. They've done a tremendous, tremendous job. Cindy and her team have expanded their recruitment efforts to attract more minority candidates to Forsyth County, and we've had some success in that area. I think I shared with you last year, we're currently about 55% white in terms of our student population. And as we analyze the data, we think within three to five years, we're going to be a minority-majority school system. We continue to grow in our diversity. Very proud of our Forsyth Teacher Academy. The first cohort had 100% pass rate. Goal three, effective and efficient financial planning. So proud, and I know you are too, of our five-star financial efficiency rating, AAA bond rating. Our fund balance at the end of this year is projected to be slightly over 15%, which we're excited about. We had a very successful sell of our bond netting $40 million earlier this spring. That will help us for future projects. Making our large schools feel small is a goal that we have for all of our schools. And you can see the different programs that we have put in place to make that happen. So my recommendation is, and of course, I'll let you ask any questions you have about our goals, and we have staff members here that can help me answer those. But, you know, I think we should continue with these four goals. You know, we have a strategic plan. We adopted it back in 2017. Our four goals align with that strategic plan. I think for our staff, having clear, concise direction from the governance team really allows them to focus on what is most important. And while we have accomplished a lot this year in those four goals, we're not, it's not 100% complete. And I just think it gives us the proper direction moving forward. I'm not going to ask you to vote on that tonight. I want you to think about it. But if you're okay with it, I'd put it on the July board meeting and ask you to adopt these, continue these goals for the upcoming school year. So any questions or comments about any of this report?
I would agree that we need to continue. There's a lot of stuff on there, like ARC has been, it's been a, obviously, it's been an investment in the system, but we've all seen the success of that. It's a five-year plan, and it's got a ways to go. PBIS, I think we're in maybe 12 schools at this point, and that's been a huge success story. But a lot of the stuff is not, it's in process, and it's going to be, even when we complete it, it's still going to be part of our system from the time we check it off our list, so to speak. So I think I would agree. But we can definitely read through this more and-
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
What do you think, Nance?
Yeah, just to make sure there's nothing missing, but I think we did that last year. We really went through it to make sure everything that we felt was a goal fit in one of these categories, like the, you know, the diversity, you know, fits under the category very well. And we know we're expanding that.
For our staff, when they're presenting to you, it's very helpful for them to have the goals clearly articulated, and they can show you how, what they're presenting aligns with those goals.
Well, like the diversity, thank God we had that in place a few years ago and had that in place. And now, as we look at a tough budget year, as we were meeting today, looking at numbers and things like that, looking at this is kind of helping guiding our decisions as we look at what's important, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. Tom, Wes, did you have any comments?
That's it. All right. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think I'm done.
Okay. Next is training staff on virtual instruction, and we have Fonda Harrison, LeAnn Rice, and Mike Evans.
You guys been a little busy?
I just thought I was busy before.
Right.
All right, so obviously, Dr. Bearden just referenced this, the importance of how these align to the board goals. And obviously, the work that we've been doing over the past nine weeks in supporting our teachers with the online instruction certainly align to both board goal one of safety for students and staff, really about the programs that we use that are online. They are strictly considered, and we have to make sure that they meet all the FERPA guidelines and things like that as far as security for our students. We work very closely with Kathy Carpenter and Student Information Services to make sure that the programs that we utilize meet those criteria. And then also, all over, teaching the whole child and supporting our students as they learn in a virtual environment. So we want to talk a little bit about the staff training. I'm going to talk about what we've done throughout these nine weeks of instruction. LeAnn's going to talk a little bit about the planning for next year and what we plan to do next year, and then Mike's going to add in information from our instructional technology and technology departments. First of all, very early in the process, we realized that even though our students and our teachers are very familiar with our IT'S Learning Platform and the applications that we use, that we felt like it was important during the time that they were working with students that we would provide opportunities for professional learning for them. So even before we moved to four-day weeks with Friday as the catch-up, we started Friday forums. And we gave those as an opportunity for teachers who needed support on the different resources and programs that we had online, we started offering those. And they became more and more popular as we moved through the nine weeks. And those were provided from, by our TNL content specialist, working specifically with the teachers and their content, and then also with the experts that we have in our district from Forsyth Virtual. And the sessions that they provided were so important because our teachers in our regular classrooms didn't go to school and learn how to be online teachers. They learned how to be teachers and how to instruct students, but it can be very different online. So we utilized the experts within our district to help us with that. And Drew and his staff did a phenomenal job in working and providing sessions for those teachers. Also, with our instructional coaches, even though not all of our schools have that allocation from the district, most of our schools have actually taken their teacher allocations and manipulated those and been able to have an instructional coach. So here from the central office level, Elena Zink, who actually works with all of those coaches on a regular basis, she provided professional learning coaches, professional learning sessions for the coaches on how to support the teachers with instructional strategies. Our content specialists were more about the resources and using the resources, but Elena was able to work with the coaches of the school on appropriate virtual strategies and how to support the students in the classroom. And also, socially and emotionally, how to support those teachers and the struggles that they were having as teachers, not seeing their students face-to-face on a regular basis, and how to support them in those ways as well. Jason Nail and his ITS team provided impromptu sessions. Let's say, for example, some teachers in some schools weren't as familiar with Microsoft Teams, how to access that, how to utilize that with the students in their classrooms and things like that. So they had impromptu and also scheduled sessions to support the ITS in the school, who then turned it and helped the teachers. And then, we also worked with our content specialist in teaching and learning to develop and really make sure teachers were aware of those priority standards as far as what absolutely was required for these students to have mastered before they move into the next school year. Obviously, there's that concern of virtual learning in comparison to face-to-face, and there's some loss potentially. And so we wanted to make sure that our teachers were well-aware of what those standards were that absolutely needed to be taught and mastered by the students prior to beginning the next year. So that's pretty much a quick overview of what we've provided for teachers so far this year, and I'm going to turn it over to you.
So now that we have moved into summer, we have, we recognize that our teachers, you know, they've gotten through this very emotional, very exhausting nine weeks of shifting so quickly. But we wanted to make sure our teachers have opportunities to dig in, to understand better how to provide a virtual teaching experience. And so some of the things that we've come up with, our instructional technology team has created, it's already been created, a course in the IT'S Learning Program called the Forsyth County Schools' Digital Resource Course. And in there, they'll find directions, tutorials, videos on all the different platforms and tools and apps that we use in Forsyth County. So teachers that want to go back and refresh on NearPod or Microsoft Teams or Google, the different documents that they have, there's all kinds of resources there that they can go in. In addition, Ruth Allen in the Technology Department has set up a program with tips and tricks specifically for IT'S Learning. And over the next five weeks, she is uploading daily videos, just short little chunks about different aspects of IT'S Learning that teachers may or may not know. And so teachers can tune into that, can look at a quick video, and get some new ideas of how to utilize IT'S Learning in a powerful way. We're also looking at offering in July an EdCamp. That's been a very popular framework for teachers for professional learning. An EdCamp format is one where you don't necessarily have an agenda prepared ahead of time, but you offer an opportunity for teachers to come together and share ideas as they're thinking of them. And so we want to look at that for online learning and offer some virtual opportunities for teachers in Java-like areas to come together and share what's worked or ideas they have as we move into the fall. Fonda had mentioned Drew and his team at Forsyth Virtual. Their expertise has been absolutely invaluable to us and our staff. And- And even back in the February DCD training, they were providing some sessions for teachers on virtual strategies. This became all the more important once March 13th. They joined our Friday forums, very, very helpful. And so this summer, they have created a four-week session, little chunks. Teachers can access those and we'll actually send that information out this week, but it starts next week. They can access those and do it at their own pace. But they're also offering a, kind of a teams joint session that they can log into and have questions answered and interact with staff from Forsyth Virtual Academy. In addition, the Forsyth Virtual Academy has created a website with all of the trainings and resources that they've created up to this point. So everything that goes back through the beginning of last year, those DCD days, the Friday forums, in addition to it, new trainings that they're creating, they have on this website. It's absolutely beautiful. It's a great place for teachers to access on their own. And they can choose topics that meet their individual needs on there. Fonda had mentioned our content specialist. Some of them have already pulled teachers in in June, others are pulling them in July. And they're reflecting back on our experience that last nine weeks, what worked, what could be better. So they're creating resources to share with their teachers at the, back at the schools on strategies that they can utilize and how they can make the online learning experience even better. We also talked about how our instructional coaches and ITSs came together this spring. We, we feel like we're prophets, that we had already talked about pulling our ITSs into the instructional coach training this upcoming year. And so this is even more important, that we have staff at each school who will be capable and trained to work with our teachers, whether it's a face-to-face or a virtual environment. We don't want to see technology as a separate entity for instruction. Good instruction utilizes technology in a transformational way. They shouldn't be as two separate things. So by pulling our ITSs together with our instructional coaches, we're really focusing on high-quality, research-based instructional strategies that happen to use technology platforms effectively. And so those trainings, we'll start those in July, but those all continue monthly through the school year with Elena and Ruth Allen working together to meet the needs of our schools in that way. And we've provided some links just so you can see the quality. I want to show you one of the, the website that Forsyth Academy has created. So as teachers access this, they'll see there's just a brief description of some of the different offerings. And then as they click in there, for example, using Flipgrid is a great way to promote engagement. And students are able to have their voice. They record answers to different questions. They can upload that for the teachers. That can be shared with the whole class so that you get that interactive component in there. And all of these options, as they've created them, are linked on here for teachers to access. Any questions about our current?
Yeah, I was talking to Mr. Hayes earlier this week, just trying to better understand, to help explain to parents the difference between our Virtual Academy and how that's not, well, it goes through IT'S learning. It's just not the same as using IT'S learning on Inclimate Weather Day and how we use IT'S learning in the classroom as a tool, but not the way Virtual Academy works. And he talked about the content specialist and how, how much they know the system. And he was talking about the resources and I was just so impressed by their knowledge and what they were doing. But as I look at all this, the resources and what you've done, I'm, I'm just, I'm blown away by what's in here. So I have two questions. One, I'm, I just graduated from college and I know that we have teachers, we're hiring first-year teachers this year. What kind of leg up are they going to have? I mean, if I was a first-year teacher this year, I'd be like, can I get on now? Can I get started and learn?
Absolutely. And Mike's going to address a little bit of that. He talks about our plan for new educators. So there, we definitely have a plan for that. We want to make sure we're meeting the needs of our new educators as well as our current educators to have everyone prepared.
And you, you talk about our instructional coaches and our ITS, and now we have a media specialist. I, I just think we are so far ahead of the game. We've been doing this for many, many years. So it's been an investment in teachers and in instruction and in the technology and the software, the hardware for so many years that we've been doing this. And every Friday, I have a Zoom meeting with my family across the entire world, from Japan to San Diego to Denver. And we just have families of all different ages. We've got, you know, kids that are in kindergarten through, through high school. And we've been comparing notes on what, what the virtual environment was like. And I mean, I, just to brag in Forsyth County, it's, I'm proud of what we're doing here, but it also saddens me when I hear some, some of the different areas. And I won't say where, well, they'll have an hour of work a day and the teacher will check in them within once a week. And they're, they don't have this online access and they don't have, they weren't prepared at all. They don't, we, I mean, we've been doing this for years. We weren't, no, obviously we weren't expecting this, but we are so far ahead of the game. So kudos to all the work you've been doing on this.
Kristen, I appreciate you sharing that. And I think I would be remiss to say, this is not, this is not a teaching and learning initiative. This is a true collaboration of all the different departments here between, you know, Drew's expertise, his team's expertise at Forsyth Virtual, our Instructional Technology Department, the Teaching and Learning Department, you know. And I think that's a testament to the, the true collaboration and how our, our team really does work together to meet the needs of students.
That's impressive. It's great. Not like when we went to school, is it?
No.
Along those lines, you know, a lot of that can be attributed back to the, the history with the board and our support from the board and superintendent. And we're talking about the ITS roles that go back, you know, years, you know, two decades that many districts still don't even have, have in place at this point too. So, so fortunately we're in that place because of the support we've received along the way. So obviously, you know, Forsyth County is continuing to grow. We will always have new educators that are coming onboard. And that's one of the areas that we wanted to make sure if we were to come, if the new school year were to come to light with some type of a hybrid or a face-to-face model, that, or I'm sorry, with an online learning model, that was one of the challenges that we wanted to make sure that we addressed early on with our new educators. Because like you said, some colleges are very supportive and proactive when they're training the teachers on utilizing new educational and digital tools, but some are not as well. So what we've done is Jason Nail and his team have surveyed all the new teachers that have come onboard. And as they're coming onboard, and the, the survey is actually quite extensive and it's a rating, a comfort level rating of all the different tools that we have within the district. So that we can then identify areas of weaknesses or areas of growth for these teachers to help provide support. Then in turn with that, we have a variety of online trainings for them to take self-paced along the lines with support of the Instructional Technology Team, the Media Specialists, as well as our, our school-based ITS. So that's something that we want to make sure that, that even the new educators are, as overwhelming as it is to be a first-year educator, in the event that it comes into some other type of a, a view of what the new education is going to look like, the new paradigm, we want to make sure that they have their support and resources along those lines. So from that side of it, we're making sure that the new educators have all the support and training that they do. They do have a mandatory IT'S learning course that they're all required to go through as well, because that's the platform that we're using across the district for instruction. Then beyond that, we really wanted to kind of figure out what, what the next step is beyond that as well. Because when we went to our online learning plan, we had to create the expectations of what the students would participate in and what the teachers would participate in. When we went into last, the pandemic last, this past year, we had to vary those expectations as well. So what we're working on right now are actually new guidelines or new expectations for what it would look like from a teacher's perspective and a student's perspective if we were to go in that hybrid model, an A-week and a B-week. The expectations will look different if we're in a truly online environment. It's like, as Dr. Bearden had alluded to, it's going to be much more rigorous. The demand is going to be there as well. And then also what the expectations would be like if we do have to step back. If something happens out of school and we have to close it for a day or two or two weeks, you know what those expectations are. So we're working with those right now. We're working on developing up those. We'll work with our administrators and then we'll roll those out and introduce those too. All, during pre-planning, all teachers would be trained on all of the expectations. Because again, at the flip of a coin, you know, if a, a switch is thrown, you know, everything's going to be turned upside down. So we want to make sure that they have all the experiences and expectations ahead of time too. Along those lines, we'll be sharing those plans at the leader talks, at our leadership summit, and then during the pre-planning, as I had mentioned earlier. And from a communication standpoint, we're going to be working out or starting to have these communication pieces with our leader talk this week. Leann's going to be sharing all of the summertime expectations or opportunities for learning for all of our teachers, because as you know, the teachers are off right now. Some are checking email, some are not. So we want to make sure that we provide plenty of opportunities to make sure that they're aware of these, an abundance of training resources that they have. So that'll be an ongoing communication plan that we'll hit throughout the summer to make sure that as many opportunities that are available are taken, taken up onto them. Any other questions? It's been a lot.
Are you clear when we use the term leader talk? Do you know what we're talking about?
That's what I was just going to ask. I don't know what leader talk is.
During, during the fourth quarter when we were out, you know, leader talk is, is a virtual staff meeting with principals, assistant principals, different, well, all of the departments in Forsyth County schools. Oftentimes well, as many as 225 people on that conversation. So when we were out, fourth quarter, we were meeting three times a week. We met every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, just to keep everybody up to speed, what was going on, you know, what we were seeing for challenges, what resources were available, just making sure we had that constant communication. Now that we are into the summer months, we, we now meet once a week. We meet every Wednesday, back tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM. And again, just kind of a briefing district-wide, what's going on, what opportunities are available, just to make sure everybody's rolling the vote in the same direction. So it's a virtual staff meeting, again, with a couple hundred people online pretty much every Wednesday.
Well, that's good though.
Yeah.
I knew you were meeting, I didn't, it was that often though.
Yes.
Well, it's just, it's just critically important everybody had the same information. And so that's why we met three times a week during that fourth quarter.
Well, it's hard to get ready during the summer for the school year with just one agenda and you have to come up with three scenarios. It's, it's probably even more than three times the work because there's so many unknowns. Oh, Tom has a question. Okay.
To me, and this, I shared with Dr. Bearden along the way, this is one of those, you know, I always look at the silver lining in the storm. And this was it, was virtual learning. And it happened to be thrown in the deep end of the pool like we did. We were better prepared to at least have some swimming lessons, so we didn't completely drown. But at the same time, we learned a whole lot. And so I think we've talked a lot about it here. And I'll just say to Leann coming onboard and thanks Fonda for your leadership and Michael, you know, trying to think through what our next steps in virtual and figuring out what that looks like for the future. Because I think we realize it's a great place for credit recovery. It's a great place for an option for a situation that we were in. So I think allowing us to grow from that, you know, through this time, keep talking about it. Don't go back to what we were before, but keep thinking about virtual. Keep thinking about what it looks like so we can do it better. And I think we found it makes me further along the way in a normal school year when everything gets back to whatever we call normal. So, you know, keep looking at that, at the resources that we need to think about, bring those forward, Mike. You know, I know you may need a virtual studio to teach out of, you may need other types, different types of resources that would enable that virtual teaching. So I say, you know, you have to advocate me as a virtual worker that I'm able to understand a little bit what that is and it's a little bit different. But preparing our students for that future in the virtual environment that I think even in the business world is turning to is going to be helpful. So thanks for letting me share a little bit.
Yeah, and Tom, I would just, I would just add to that. You know, one consistent comment we had from teachers when they took the survey was, they're going to be a better teacher now than they was, they were before. They, they really learned some new skills. They have some more tools in their toolbox. And so that was a kind of an unintended consequence, if you will, for being out that period of time. Number two, in terms of getting better, one, one consistent comment from parents is they want to see their teachers more often, even in a virtual setting, instead of just recordings. And so that's part of our, our planning as we, we get comments back from students and from parents. And it's, it's the reason why we put those surveys out there is that was, that was consistent, that feedback. And so we will certainly, you know, incorporate that in our training. And then number three, you know, I know this is, you know, very important to you. It's important to all of us, is once we decide how many teachers are going to be teaching virtually K-5 this fall, it'll be imperative that we have continuous professional development available for them to make sure that we're continuing to navigate this process as successfully as possible. So I just wanted to add that to his comments.
You know, one last thing that Mike mentioned, which I think is important, was the expectations. You mentioned it for the parents and the students, but also, I'm sorry, the teachers and the students, but also the parents. And that was something that was in the comments an awful lot about the expectations for the fourth quarter. But going into the new school year, that's a whole different thing. So expectations was in the comments and I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that because I think that's what, what we're going to look like in the fall, we need that expectation set.
Final comment, I'm sorry, Larry, you know.
But that was, that was in there a lot. That was in the comments.
One of the things we did this spring, as you know, was the hold harmless provision. That, that was put in place because we had an equity issue. We had some students that didn't have access. And maybe families with three or four children and one computer. And so we were, we were in a crisis emergency situation. That's why we did that. That will not happen this school year. If families choose to be in the virtual environment, it is going to be the same rigor, the same expectation as if they were face-to-face. And even if we're forced as an entire system to go back and learn virtually for an extended period of time, we are not going back to hold harmless. We are going to expect students to be in attendance. We are working now to identify families who need devices and connectivity. And we can provide that. We, we purchased a lot of those this spring. We're prepared. All families have to do is let us know what their needs are and we can make that happen. And so again, I just want to be really clear, the expectations will look far different this fall virtually than they did this spring. And I know you're anxious to hear the financial.
Oh, exciting stuff now, Larry.
Next is the finance report with Larry Hamel.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to be looking at the May 2020 financial statements. As always, we keep goal three in mind of the governor's goals going forward. So let's jump into the statement of cash receipts and disbursements from May 31st, 2020. As you can see, we began the month with about $111,000, $111 million. We ended the year with about 98, excuse me, the month with 98.6. This time last year, we had about $82 million. So we're definitely up ahead of schedule last year. The numbers for the revenue and the expenses are a little bit deflated because of the COVID-19. Of less expenses just because we didn't have as much activity at the end of the school year normally you see. And the revenue is a little bit down just because of what's going on with less money coming in for TVAT and some other funds.
Before you move on from that, I think there's, there's so many people that still have the misconception. They look and they say, oh, you've got $98 million in the bank. Why can't, you know, you, you're losing all this money from the state. Why can't you just, you know, use this money? So would you just explain a little bit how that money is used throughout the summer to pay salaries? And how, you know, how that will keep going down because the money's not coming in from?
We, we get the majority of our tax receipts in October and November of the previous year. And then during the year, we get our QBE money, which is not quite enough to pay our revenue, excuse me, our expenses for all of our salaries and benefits. Salary and benefits make up about 90% of our salaries, excuse me, of our budget. With that being said, we're basically living off of those monies coming in in October, November, after December. And then each month, we're drawing a little bit more money down from those reserves as we go along. In the month of July, August, and September, we're at the point now where we'll be down to, even in September, we'll be down to the teens in terms of money. So in theory, we only have maybe the end of September, middle of September, maybe 13 or 14 million dollars, based on what the capital looks like right now, the tidy is over. So it's very important that we get that money from our tax receipts at beginning October and through November and December, the tidy is over for the next school year.
So it's very fluid.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's pretty much the nature of most every school system in the state. So if we look at revenue, some good news on the revenue side. As you can see, we're at 99.24% collection to Avalorm. There's a couple of categories we're ahead of schedule, definitely 100%. That's intangible taxes and other local revenues. This time last year, we're only at 93.92% collection. So we're definitely ahead of schedule. On the expense side, 91.31 is exactly where we should be. This time last year, we were slightly ahead at 92.44. So there has been some savings this year, just in different categories. Not as much as you think it would be, just because we still had to spend some money for supplies and other activities to get ready for COVID. and other activities to get ready for COVID-19 and upcoming school year.
So an example that, I know that when it came to transportation, they had, from talking to them, they had purchased ahead gas, they'd filled up, gas prices were low, so they filled up their tanks, filled up the buses. So we did actually have some savings in April and May, of course, and there was less trips for the summer, but they did purchase ahead. We did have some savings from cleaning supplies, but they also purchased ahead.
Right.
I think we have 18-month supply in cleaning supplies, so that, so they, there is, definitely has been some savings, but they also save, you know, purchased ahead, so.
Right.
But we have had some savings.
On our debt service cash analysis, as you can see, we've got 63 million dollars sitting in those different accounts. This time last year, we only had 41 million, so we've built up our balances a little. The debt service account is at 35.4, last year we had about 25.5. The SPOS 5 account has 19 million, we had about 4 million. And the SPOS treasury count is at 8, this time last year, we were at 11.6, so that one's a little bit down. But that's just because we're not getting the interest of return we thought we were going to get on interest earned. Investment summary overall, this is money that's sitting out there in investments, not cash, it's 273 million dollars. This time last year, we had about 218. One of the side benefits, excuse me, side benefits, one of the silver linings about the COVID-19 is, was brought to our attention, about how fast we're doing construction. So one of the things we noticed is we're up several million dollars a month now, ahead of schedule, spending money that we had planned to spend out of the SPOS funds and also the bond funds. So that's just a side note to this. That's why that number is not much higher than it is right now.
Just want to follow that, elaborate.
So this money would have been, the amount of money we would have had, based on what we thought we were going to spend, would have been a lot higher right now than it is now. But because the construction process ramped up like it did, we spent the funds down faster, which is a good thing, we issued the bonds when we did.
Right. Because we needed the money, right. This came across.
The great news on the SPOS, if you look down there at the bottom for April 2020, you notice we brought in 3.3 million dollars. Compared to last year, we're only down 3.33%. The state was down 9.67%, and counties like Gwinnett were down 14%. I think the CAV was down 19. I'm not sure about APS. So we came up pretty good compared to what most schools in the state was doing with those funds right here. So this time last year, we were averaging 3.275 million dollars. So on the total average line there, we're collecting about 61,000 more a month there. And then on the 12-month average, we're collecting about 100, excuse me, 112,000 more a month right now than last year.
It's gonna be a couple more weeks before we know the May numbers.
Yeah, I think June's going to come in strong. I don't think it's going to be 3%. The, any balances at the elementary schools? This time last year was 4.8, so it's basically where it was last year. The activity is down because of COVID-19 and what was going on. There would have been more activity on here for year-end activity. The middle schools are at 1.5, last year we were at 1.4, and the high schools are down to 4.3, and we were at 4.4. So the high school's a little bit down compared to what they did last year. The high schools make some of their money this time of the year with different fundraising stuff, so that's why their balance is not as high. And at the end of the year, we're at 10.28, and this time last year, we're at 10.27, and the percentage is pretty close to what they were last year. And that's the financial statements for May 2020. Any questions?
If there's no questions, we'll move on to action items, again with Larry Hamel. First will be Forsyth County Schools FY '21 spending resolution.
Yes, so because we are not going to have our budget approved until the 21st of July, we're required to get a spending resolution approved and signed by the board that authorizes us to spend 1/12 of the previous year's budget for the month of July. And what I'm requesting is that you approve the spending resolution and have it signed.
Captain, approve.
We have a recommendation? Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second for discussion?
We have a motion from Darlene, a second from Kristin. Discussion?
And just to clarify, the reason we're doing this is because the state has not passed their budget, and since they haven't passed their budget, we don't know what funds we're receiving, so therefore we have to kind of just plug away. And so this just allows the superintendent to pay the bills in the meantime?
Yes, ma'am.
And I just want to, and so it would be, it's for MNO and for SPOS, and just, I would just clarify that if anything comes against the SPOS funds, whatever, it still comes to the board for a vote, as it would normally would do.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, motion passes. Next is the FY 2021 liability insurance renewal.
You've got a sheet, I think, on your screen that shows you what the rates came in. So the reason they came in so late was the COVID-19 crisis has just upended the entire liability market. Not only that, but we had a new broker this year, we haven't had a new broker in almost 15 years. So they had to go out to the market and work with the existing companies and look for new companies to get the process started with getting the bids in. The problem is the bids took a long-term, in quotes, time to come in. We were told initially to look about a 15% to 20% increase. As you can see, that didn't happen, it was more like a 10%. So we basically went from about 1,064,000 up to about 1,098. There are a couple of things on here that are brand-new. For the first time, we have to have a drone liability coverage.
I saw that.
So my understanding is, is when you have a piece of equipment that's that high in the air, and it weighs five to 10 to 15, 20 pounds, and it was all sudden to stop, and the gravity pulls it back down, there's going to be some liability where it lands. So that's one of the main reasons for that one. The other thing is, is our cyber went up a tiny bit, or she actually went down a tiny bit. That has a lot to do with how well Mike and his group has done what they've done to make sure we're protected, so that helped there. Workers' comp, that went down significantly. Part of the reason was we paid 14 months in advance when we changed how we did the workers' comp, so we're only paying for 12 months now. And the rest of it is standard liability. One of the things that has happened is under property, what used to be broken out separately, several different items, is all included in one bid. So we're able to go out and get that all into one umbrella policy for that side of it. Any questions?
Do we have a recommendation?
Captain, approve.
We have a recommendation? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Waiting for you guys.
By Tom.
We have a motion by Kristin and a second by Tom. Any more discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, motion passes. Next is points of information. Dr. Bearden?
I only have one final item. I just want to take this opportunity to recognize Fonda Harrison again. She will be retiring at the end of June after 32 years of tremendous service to Forsyth County schools. She has been an awesome leader, a wonderful educator, and an even better person. So please join me in thanking and congratulating her. This is my virtual hug, Fonda.
Standing ovation, guys.
Things get better, we'll make it for real. Now, just.
What a way to go, wow.
Yeah. It saddens me that we weren't able to do something more formal, but at some point we will. But I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, you know, sometimes people announce their retirement, and then they kind of shift gears and kick it back a little bit and just kind of get to the end of it. I'm telling you, Fonda has worked her heart, I mean, she has put her heart and soul into her job. She always does, but I'm telling you, since March 13th, she has been an absolute superstar in this school system and continues. She's here first thing every morning, I hear from her late at night on a pretty regular basis. I mean, she is committed to finishing the job, and she has done a great job of helping LeAnn transition to her new role, and I have complete confidence, we're not going to miss a beat. And that's not only because of LeAnn's leadership, it's because Fonda has provided the training and resources and support to make it happen, and we're all so appreciative. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel, for our affidavit?
So moved.
Motion by Tom and second by Kristin, all in favor? Opposed? Hearing no opposition, motion passes.